Okay, like to call to order tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting, November, or I'm sorry, Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty-five. If we could start meeting with everybody rising, paying respects to our flag.
I would like to be the symbol of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you. If we could note the role.
Note it, just a reminder, make sure you speak into your microphone and make sure that the green light is on. If you, if you think it's on, it's probably not. It will be bright green. You'll, you'll know it's on when you hit the on button.
I do attention.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to number four, approval of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda, January ninth, twenty twenty-five, for the Planning Commission Regular Meeting.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that carries. Item number five, conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Anything anybody needs to disclose this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to number six, approval of the minutes, Planning Commission Regular Meeting, December twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Planning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes.
Well, second, the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to number seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on this agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to number eight, Commissioners' Comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to go over? Did you guys want to introduce themselves, that would be great.
Yeah, sure, Dave Wagner, I'm one of the trustees that was recently elected from his last election. Look forward to working with everyone here on this committee, uh, you know, to, to work within and do better for, for Oxford.
I'm Mark Lincolnship, I was appointed last night.
The seasoned veteran.
Yeah.
There's another new guy.
Going to me?
I'm sorry.
Another new guy who's not here tonight, I do know that.
Yeah, he's not starting off good, missing the first night, we'll have to give him grief, uh, next time. Okay, moving on to number nine, public hearing, which I do not believe we have, uh, anything on the agenda this evening. So let's move to ten, unfinished business, master plan update.
Good evening. Good evening Commissioners, Mateo Pasalacqua, Carlisle Warman Associates, we're the planning consultants for the township. Happy New Year, get that out of the way, and good new Commissioners, welcome. You know, as I've worked with the other Commissioners, if there's anything we can do or explain, or as we go through the evening, you know, the materials this evening, whatever questions we have, I'm happy to answer. So, for tonight's master plan update, we have two items to go over, the design guidelines draft, as well as the safety net priorities, uh, portion of the master plan. Let me just see which ones queued up first in the tag here. Almost there. Okay, alright, so for design guidelines, so, um, a while back, a few months ago, we had highlighted the fact that your current master plan does not have design guidelines, and engaged interest in whether or not you would like the upcoming master plan to have it. Uh, you did, so we kind of went through it and outlined, uh, some specific areas, as well as kind of descriptions of those areas and what kind of, you know, aesthetic design elements we might want to incorporate into those. Uh, so tonight, what you have in front of you, is that the first time you've seen it? We've edited this a few times, but this is kind of the final draft that we're putting forward, uh, for the current master plan. And so I wanted to kind of go through the questions that we have in the memo. Uh, and again, we'll kind of, I'll kind of work my way left to right or right to left. And again, Commissioners, any questions you have, whatever comments you may have, you know, happy to work with you on those, you know, it's, uh, we'll get you up to speed, uh, but it won't all happen tonight, so, uh, we'll do it again. The questions really relate to the general language of, of the guidelines, was really this first page. And then, as we kind of go through it, the specific descriptions of each district and the design objectives, you know, I'm essentially looking at feedback for, uh, feedback on all of it. Um, so I'm happy to kind of do it in sections, I'm happy to kind of do it all at once, but we'll kind of start with Commissioner Noel. Do you have any thoughts or comments on the design guidelines?
I have a couple thoughts and comments on it. Uh, we talked about the aesthetics development goals, I think we need to write that out as a definition if we're going to use that term. And that's in your cover letter, but that, those were the questions that were asked. Later in the letter, right above you, respectfully, guidelines are not required, but if incorporated in master plan can provide reference for developers on community goals, as well as informed township decisions upon zoning requirements for building materials, landscape, and parking, et cetera. I think we need to be very conscious of that and carry that through the three different areas. And do you want to talk about the three different areas now, or you want to start how you want to handle them?
No, we can discuss, so the, the design guidelines are broken out into three separate areas.
Correct. The first, the first one that I, that I'd like to add comment to is the design guidelines for M24. On the initial page of that, the bottom is enhanced signage requirements. Now, I know we did a, a signing ordinance update. So what, what does that mean, enhanced signage requirements? Are we doing more, or are we just referring to the, what is the ordinance of today, or?
Which, which specific part of M24 are you referring to?
It says design guidelines.
Oh, the front page, okay, this is the eye. No, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, you can make reference to where if, like, you, right, we redid the signage. Uh, but if we're going to incorporate design elements into the structures, do we want those design elements complemented into the sign requirements as well? As far as, you know, the signage theme or the color of the material matching that or what the building's built? Because currently, we don't have that, not saying we have to, but that's what we're referring to.
We, the Planning Commission did a field trip, had lunch out, and then we, we drove twenty-four. And in driving twenty-four, was part of that was dividing up into the three sections that we have today. But the other part was that we took a poll on what poll, on the type of signs we had, whether it was a pole sign or, different, the many different signs throughout each of the three districts. So, all that, I hate to see that work that we did on that afternoon out and all the discussions we had, go to not be identified in this, uh, master plan. So if we're gonna, if signage is important, then we need to expand that signage a little bit in the master plan, so that the possibility of a, of a renovated piece of property can't use the existing sign unless it meets our design standards. And we address that in the ordinance, but do we need to talk more about that?
I don't know that it necessarily needs to, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't need to find its way in the master plan, but the new ordinance itself, I mean, it has the, the, the non-conform language and, you know, the variance optional language. This would really just be speaking the form and the function of it, which would enhance what you have, not necessarily, uh, water it down, if that's what the, the.
What I, what I'd like to see is the non-watered-down master plan. So that, that's my first issue, I don't know if you want to talk to the other board members in regards to the, the verbiage there, but I have a few others if you want to continue.
No, I mean, let's, I'm sorry.
Mr. Noel, would it satisfy you if we had Mr. Pasalacqua, in parentheses behind the enhanced sign requirements, reference the ordinance by number?
That is a really good thought, I don't know if we want to go to that detail, because if we were to change something, and the number were to change, now we have to go back and do another revision on our master plan, is that correct?
You wouldn't necessarily revise your master plan, it just would have, it wouldn't have the correct information in there.
Maybe the terminology could be the, the latest, uh, signs, signage ordinance.
Sure.
And then that would help us with the numbers, if that's alright with you, Commissioner.
I'm trying to satisfy what you think is your requirement.
Well, I'm just bringing it out for conversation.
If we change a sign ordinance, does a number change?
Yeah, version one, version two, version three, and it, it goes from there.
Got you.
Yeah, I think reference to whatever the late, latest ordinance is would be appropriate. You don't want to, you don't want to get yourself in a, in a mode where you're having to update multiple documents every time you pass any ordinance.
That's fine, I just, the, the current sign ordinance does not speak to you, you got to make it out of brick, you got to do it this way or that way, which is really kind of what design guidelines speak to, I'm not arguing the point.
Signage is very important, so we need to give it.
Okay.
Well, you could also say, uh, enhanced signage requirements per the latest sign ordinance.
Okay.
So you don't lose the fact that we already have an ordinance.
Okay, that's good, thank you, I like that.
Okay.
Uh, going on page twenty-eight, now we're into the M24 South District, SCD Drainer, uh, Minnetaka Drive. We call out some specifics in your design objectives. The last one on the right is encourage use of brick. We don't carry the brick throughout the other three districts, we carry out generalities. Do we want to call out brick in this specific area from, uh, South Center District, Drainer to Minnetaka, or do you want to be not so specific?
You're asking yourself that question.
I am.
No, no, I know.
I'm trying to.
No, no, I, I, and, and it brings up a good point, because guidelines are guidelines. And so they, they can be, I guess, as specific as brick, or they could be as general as high-quality materials, which has found its way into the document a few times.
Right.
And really more or less, what the, what the guideline element does is, it can be a reference for a developer to say, gosh, if I throw this stuff in here, it probably gets me a few brownie points, and we can kind of go from there. But if it's not in a zoning ordinance, it's just not required. But what this can do is, if this is adopted, these design guidelines are adopted, it then gives the township the ability to go forward and say, okay, when we do our zoning maintenance, where we do update our ordinance, we're going to incorporate some of these design elements into it, and we're going to apply some technicalities to them. So one of the examples I used earlier, what today was, um, like window coverage requirements. You know, thirty percent of your facade that faces M24 in this district must be window, must be glazing. You know, or fifty percent of your facade must be brick, you know, and then the other fifty percent can be, uh, you know, fiber cement boards, or tree and wood, or something of that nature. That part doesn't need to be here, the language about high-quality material needs to be here. So, so the encourage of brick, I think, was just more of an attempt to, to follow in the aesthetics of what is in the village, but it, it does not have to be here. Encourage brick could come or go.
Let me build on that a little bit, in the other ones, you talk about quality building materials, you talk about desired building materials and landscaping. Do we need to take brick out of here and make it more general to?
High-quality materials? No, no.
I don't like buzzwords, man.
No, high-quality materials isn't a buzzword, it just offers you the generality, so that when we get to the point of adding the technicals to it, we've got someone over to say this, that, or the other.
Okay.
Is there, we just, I, I think there's a proposal to, to replace that with high-quality materials.
I'd take brick out.
Okay.
Because we can't hold anybody to it.
No, that's fine, is that a general? Uh, we'll get to everybody's comments, but for now, is the take the brick out of the first one?
Well, I think encourage the use of brick is what it says, it doesn't say you need to use brick or anything like that, right? So, I mean, encouraging it, I don't see the term and the language.
I think would encourage the use of high-quality materials, I think to John's point is to kind of open, broaden out a little bit, and then if we go technical with the zoning ordinance, we could then say brick, or we could then say whatever.
Alright, is that where you're getting at?
Yes.
Thank you.
And can you put approved instead of high-quality?
Who's approving it?
Yeah, we can't, my understanding is.
My only thing is, my interpretation of what's considered a high-quality product, in your version of high-quality, could be the difference between OSB siding and.
No, a hundred percent, and that's why if the design guidelines go into the final, but the adopted master plan with generalities, we then have the, the position to say, okay, now we're going to update the zoning ordinance, this says high-quality materials, ORC gets together, what's high-quality? It's brick, it's wood, it's this, it comes to you guys, you know, you know the process.
Right, it expands.
Other notes, Commissioner Noel?
Uh, twenty, thirty, we talked about desired building materials, I think we've covered that.
Yep.
I think we've covered that. And then on page thirty-two, in the second paragraph, the right-hand stat, it says the status multifamily against housing options in close proximity to new developments, design can be townhomes, attached residential. My comment to myself was, we need to make sure that the zoning gets changed, if we're going to call it out in the master plan, we need to have the zoning maps of the zoning change to allow that. Do you want to get that tight in, in describing that?
And I think that's a fair point of feedback for all the Commissioners to offer.
Yeah, I, I think, John, uh, once the master plan gets approved, then we need to go back and take it and go against the zoning ordinances and have the ORC look at updating, correcting, do whatever to make the two in line with one another.
And maybe if I can, Commissioner Noel, tell me if I'm right or wrong. It, like, what you're displaying is you're saying, if it's here, and we decide to move forward with it, that would mean that portions of this northern M24 area would obviously have industrial or large commercial zone, but then adjacent to it, we would be opening the opportunity to zonos as a denser residential adjacent to it?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, for or against that kind of thought process for that area, I think that's one of the points that Commissioner Noel was making. So, the wording in there is specific about a denser style of housing, and it references the missing middle from the perspective of if we're going to promote that type of, you know, that type of development up there, this type of housing might support that. But, again, it also comes with zoning implications as well.
And then the last one, I, I go back to page twenty-eight, the top paragraph would be a tenth, we reference the village. Consistent, top paragraph, consistent design principles with flexible, long configurations and amenities will complement the style of the village by maintaining the distinct identity of the township. I've had the opportunity to sit on the village planning commission, we work very hard at maintaining the aesthetics of the village. I'd like to see us, uh, complement that on the township side, that we want, we want to complement the style of the village as well, if it applies in that, in the, in that area.
Okay.
It's just a comment. And I, I close the book.
And that relates us kind of just with your role and, and the, the relationship between the two just being that of a higher importance, the, the coordination. Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Wagner?
No, I have no questions, I'm good.
Okay.
Nicely done, by the way.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Bailey?
Just a, a question on page thirty-four.
Well, this is time for comments, Mr. Wagner starts.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, John, we want to go back to John.
I got nothing to add there, then.
Yeah, I know, Commissioner Turner.
Uh, yeah, go for it, what do you got? Just, just out of curiosity, page thirty-four, uh, the township should consider the cost of construction and development guidelines. My only concern with that is, and, and I could be reading this wrong, is, do we want, is that going to say that if it can't look a certain way, we don't want it? Or we should settle for a lesser thing because it's affordable to whoever's going to build there?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question, so, both, some of you know, and, or know or don't know, but in a former life, I worked in commercial real estate development. And, and I also work in some communities right now who have design guidelines that they implemented, converted to zoning ordinances, or very, very, very particular about what they wanted, which I don't have any problem with at all, I mean, that's the, the point. Uh, but some of the requirements are so specific, and in some ways, challenging to today's designing construction methods, that the cost of development in that area is somewhat prohibitive for the market that they have. And it has either a stifled projects coming to them, or when they come to them, they are flooded with waiver requests. So, it's not my comparison of you to the other communities that I work with, it's not apples to apples in any way, shape, or form, but that's the point, is that you, you should establish some standards for these districts if you want them. Establishing materials for facades or percentages, that is not unreasonable. Saying you want everything to look like eighteen eighties, you know, Baroque America, that might be a problem. And that's how the other community does, because this is public, and I don't need them watching and getting mad at me, that's all they do, but that's the example. Okay. That's all.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Turner?
On page thirty-two, and you see it on your map on page thirty-three. My question is, this area you indicate goes from Dunwa to Thomas. And my question is, why that doesn't go in state all the way to Davison Lake Road, which is the upper end of the township?
If I'm not mistaken, it's, the, the types of development that we're talking in this section are much larger format. And once you get north of Tom, it's Tom, Thomas Road, there's a lot smaller lots, and it's not, it's not really conducive to these large-scale things that we're discussing. Um, that's not to say it couldn't be redeveloped as such someday, um, but I guess that would be the reason for why it was left out.
I would think you'd put it in, just to make sure you've got it. I mean, on the south end of the township, you went all the way down to Indian Lake Road.
Yes.
And, and there's areas down there that are hard to develop, what's left?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I, I think, I think from a design guideline perspective, I don't think it's any harm to run it up there. I think if we start digging into zoning ordinance, we got to dial in a little bit more, just to make sure we're not generating much non-conformities or something like that.
I'd like to suggest, if I might, that I, I don't, I'd like to see a map of that, and see how it would fold in into the M24 Highway View District. And take Mr. Turner's comment, and if, if we can fold it in, let's by all means do it up to Davis Lake, but I don't have a.
You're talking about, you'd like to kind of see an aerial of?
Well, to, to make a final determination on this, to see, you know, we have a very nice map that you've given us with property lines, and we can, we can kind of tell the largest of the properties and things like that. I don't know what it is, right off the top of my head, from Thomas Road up to Davis Lake.
Let's take a look. Every now and then when I use this, and I type in Oxford, it takes me to the United Kingdom, and it's like this visual shock, like, no, no, that's, that doesn't look right, like, that looks a little dense for what we're dealing with. Give it a second here. Oh, you know what, there we go. Once you get north of Thomas, we actually don't have a lot of properties that actually front LaPita Road. The property's bad.
That's why I wanted to see it, because I thought the same thing.
Yeah.
Could you go up a little farther more? Go all the way up to Big Ben?
Davis Lake Road, right, this, or no. Yep, yeah. So.
Mr. Turner, how does that map look to you?
Trying to make it, like I said, it's a little lagged, but I'll try to zoom in a little bit more, just so we can. Yeah, we just, we, past Thomas, we don't have a lot of properties in front of it.
So my question is, do we need it?
Well, the only thought is, it could change. Property.
I'll reverse the question, what would it hurt to include it?
Well, that's my point, I'd like to see it included. I think in a lot of points and things of, of items, we tend to forget the little village of Thomas and the activity in that area.
Is there a majority thought either way of expanding it one way or the other? I mean, I'll, I'll, I will tell you that I don't think from a guideline perspective, because we aren't talking about something that's required, that there's any harm in extending it, there's obviously a reason why we did it. But when, but it's just something we're going to be cognizant of if the ORC takes it out and starts applying standards to things.
I have no problem extending it.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good extending it.
Will this affect any of the property owners today? If we extend it, and they decide to try to sell properties, are going to be, oh, this is changing?
As a master plan guideline, you know.
Okay.
It's, it's just the fact that, that you've kind of set the path for, you know, you guys are all gone, there's a new group in front of you, they want to update the zoning ordinance, they're looking at the master plan you put together, there is a grounds to start thinking about applying those requirements to that area.
Okay, I would just, my only hesitation would be somebody not being able to sell a five-a-penny per parcel, because we've changed it. Other than that, I'm good.
For that reason, I would concur.
To, to expand it?
To that.
Oh, to that, okay. Again, I, I don't think we're, I, I, I would think we are in a, in a better position at this point to, to not extend it. It's something that can be, it could, it's something that doesn't stop you if you want to think about it later, of going about other mechanisms to consider it. That's, that's my, that's my thought, that stuff, I mean, I think you gotta.
I think now I'm starting to be a little worried about any unintended consequences, so I'm going to withdraw my extended vote.
Done?
What is that zone up there?
Residential R something. Sorry, that's fine, I just want to hear from your planning consultant, R something. Uh, it's, it's residential, um, I think the larger the R3 is what we have up there.
Just wondered if there's a ripple effect of some sort that we're not making out at this point in time.
I, I don't see, because of the, because of the time it's going to take for utilities to get up there to support the kind of design for the types of businesses that we're talking about, you will get another run at this master plan before that kind of development pressure gets that far in the run, I think.
This master plan's been for five years.
Five years, sorry, yeah.
Well, with, with that comment, a question I would have is, would that prohibit us from saying, hey, we should run utilities up there, why, it's residential already?
You're asking, should you run infrastructure up there because there's residential already? Um, no, I mean, I think the, I think the expansion of, of infrastructure up in the pier is more economic development based on industrial and commercial diversity than this residential development. I feel like we're humbling around a consensus to, to leave it as is. Does that?
Your recommendation is, you drew it to that point for a reason.
Yes.
If your recommendation is to leave it there.
Bob, how do you feel? I have no problem, either way.
Yeah, I can, I can leave it there, I was wanting to understand why.
Yeah, that's a fair point.
We didn't take it all the way to the end of the township.
Okay. Thank you, did you have other comments on the design guidelines?
No, that was a big one.
Okay, alright. Commissioner Lincolnship?
I'm okay for now, as I haven't had a tremendous amount of time to review.
I was going to say, you should, like, hit me with, just start going on this huge list, I mean, it's impressive, it's just that. No, no, that's fine, any, any questions going away, look at them.
I appreciate it.
Commissioner Wilson?
So, you know, we spoke earlier today, just kind of going through some of these. And, um, as I'm going through it, I'm thinking about traffic and pedestrian safety the whole time, right? And how, as this corridor starts to become more and more, say, we'll call it developed, but, or redeveloped, that could bring more residential, more people into the area, biking, walking, whatever, um, and their safety. And, you know, twenty-four is. And, you know, twenty-four is a pretty heavily traveled road. So, um, those were kind of, I always had that base of thoughts and going through, thinking about, you know, how are people in this community gonna enjoy these amenities and and do it safely? And, um, so I kept on, a- as we talked earlier, I keep on thinking about traffic studies and traffic and
Yeah.
congestion and all those things, so, um, but back to the guidelines, um, the, uh, let's see, we'll go to the, uh, page twenty-eight, I had a few comments, um, just looking at this. Um, we talked about the comprehensive traffic study happening, um, in another way, right, would help us make decisions or help us steer our thoughts when developments come our way. Um, and the, uh, the loss or the level of service of some of the traffic lights that we currently have and how some of these, um, these designs adding more traffic might affect current levels of service that are already. But, you know, the overall building design on twenty-eight, you know, looking at the, um, more brick, I, actually, I could have checked mark next to that because I thought of that and the high quality materials, however you want to word that is fine, but I do like encouraging, um, the use of brick. Um, one of the questions I had about residential uses on upper floors, it's the last bullet, or the second from last bullet point in the, uh, design objectives, promote ground level, commercial slash retail with residential uses on upper floors. Is there high demand? Have we found there's a high demand for that? And I'm just thinking if we, you know, promote this, but there's no demand or a high level of vacancy, does that, I think aesthetically it looks great for kind of a downtown feel, but, you know, I look up and down that twenty-four corridor, there's a lot of bricks in those types of buildings. Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of it, I just, as I'm, you know, speaking with commissioners and gathering our thoughts about it, is, you know, how far do we want to push that design style?
Yeah.
This is basically between Minnetoka and Drainer, right?
Yeah, just south of the village.
Okay. And there's just some large gaps in there that, it would, there, it seems very choppy and not a lot of continuity.
Yeah, it's, it, it's funny, because the first development that would be done in that area like this would stick out like a sort of, um, tenth one that gets done like this will look perfect. So it's kind of, you, you are kind of in a position to see if you can't get the ball rolling on it. As far as the mixed-use elements is concerned, I mean, I will say this much as far as, I mean, everybody knows housing is in demand, right? But I will say that, again, in either working with other communities or in a formal like running pro formas for developments, with the way housing is right now, um, the residential element of it is what makes the development work. That the developers and all, the developers almost, they're pitching the retail because it's required. They want the residential above because the rental for the residential outpaces the retail. Um, if you make retail too much of it, it, it starts to screw with the numbers and it, and it falls apart. But as far as the demand for it, I would say that, A, yes, from a, uh, an economic development standpoint, there's demand for it. Also, it helps bolster what retail you are looking to promote there, um, you know, bodies on the ground, feet on the sidewalk, things like that. And again.
And then they, and as we talked earlier, you know, buildings that might be vacant or vacant space, you know, message that suns.
You mean if, if, if it gets built and not leased up?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it probably doesn't come to you as a speculation type of project. If it, if it gets to us, they've probably got their tenants. Um, but yeah, no, I, I, I get that. You don't want to build a bunch of spaces that could be challenges down the road. Um, I don't, I think residential, allowing residential above or in some form of density nearby, um, can only help the retail element and the downwind development of it. I don't think it could hurt it. And again, being guidelines, where you kind of put your rubber to the road on this is if we decide to go, you know, if we decide to develop a mixed-use zoning area in your map, um, or like, you know, some sort of overlay that would allow this, because right now you don't have a mixed-use zoning district.
Excuse me. Not sure if it matters, but I'm aware that there's not demand in the village of Oxford currently.
There is demand?
Yes.
Okay. I just see some vacant buildings, you know, I picture driving up twenty-four and I look at, you know, the corner of Drainer as an example, it, it's, there's vacant buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and I know we can't solve that here, but I just want to be kind of aware of that, um, as we're looking at, making recommendations on building types. The, uh, on page thirty, there is a comment about, um, design objectives, the fir- first bullet point, develop commercial areas to complement new and existing residential. Um, it just, I think about roof heights and other things that could impact existing structures or existing, um, people in the area and be, you know, conscientious of the buffers that, to, to afford those and, um, um, building heights for views depending on, you know, elevations, of course, and, um, in particular, I think about, you know, they're building those phase two and phase three right now. Um, I think the gentleman with the enclaves might be here tonight.
Yeah.
But they have a beautiful view, um, tree height view looking to the south and, uh, the west. And, um, you know, building, buildings or, um, two, three story buildings in that area, or maybe zone to be okay to do it. Um, it might change their views a little bit, so I'm not saying that we have to do it just for that area, but I want to be just aware of it as we're, we're looking at some of these guidelines.
Okay.
Um, and I think one of my last points on here is really about, um, it kind of goes back to pedestrian safety again about, you know, there's one bridge that goes over for the Polyand Trail over on twenty-four. And if there's opportunity through, if not this, maybe our next topic about safety paths, about looking at either some sort of a pedestrian bridge or a tunnel under M twenty-four. And I know that might sound, for pedestrian traffic, that might sound very challenging to do that, but it seems like they would only become more and more challenging to do something like that in the future. Um, and I, I think about the Ray Road area by Stony Lake, as development happens up in that, that area, there may be the need to get across twenty-four and with speed limits being what they are, it seems like it would be a good idea for us to take that in consideration and look at.
So would you have, have, across all three districts, would you kind of be looking for something that references, you know, pedestrian crossing safety? You know, like what, like for the village area, it would be something like crosswalks. For something like North LaPirro, we probably do start talking about as far fetched as it may seem, a bridge or a tunnel. But you're just thinking maybe a reference to a context appropriate, like pedestrian crossing in each one of the districts, just a reference to it?
Yeah, it's hard to put that in a design guideline, right? That's more of a safety path item, isn't it?
Yeah, uh, yes, and I, I would say yes and no. I mean, it's not to say that it is part of a, a pedestrian connection requirement that if development proves to, if someone wants to put in a really big development along twenty-four, and we know it's going to generate some crosswalk traffic and speed limits are fifty-five, then it opens up a, as long as it makes its way to some part of the zoning ordinance, the conversation opens up to say, okay, we, we need this improvement out of this.
Well, wherever you think we can recommend putting it, maybe if some of the master plan wording is somewhere, the commissioners don't have any, you know, comments. Either way, um, good or bad, but I think, you know, as I see things like that, there, there's that, um, Boulder Point has that car path tunnel near M twenty-four, and to build something like that, I think that was there from, you know, history, right? From, uh, from grappling activities and that's a huge asset. And, um, not going to use frequently by the public, but a tunnel like that, you'll, I see tunnels like that under major roads in other cities, other areas to get pedestrians to lakes, ponds, other walking paths, things like that.
Sure.
Just helps connect it all.
Okay.
Safely especially, right?
Yeah, okay.
Isn't that the one that, uh, Amazon tried to, uh, drive through?
No, it's a different one. That's a different one, but that is a good one. That goes underneath on Market Street, yeah. That's a good picture.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, I'd like to make a suggestion of, of Don, do you put that on page twenty-six, the design guidelines for M twenty-four? That we cover that as one of your bullet points? The following elements are incorporated to the design guidelines, as you put a general statement expressing that of Don.
Yeah, about here, gotcha.
And, and then, Mr. Chair, if I might, I have one more comment that I'd like to have cover all three areas.
Yes.
The comments on page thirty, on the right-hand side, incorporate the use of service drives and de-acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes. I'd like that to be put on design guidelines for M twenty-four on page twenty-six along with that.
That's fine. The only reason, the only one that it's not a part of is the part just south of the village. And only because from, from a development standpoint.
If they were to develop the corners of M twenty-four and take down three or four buildings, then that might be a time to have a service drive.
In, in the area of just south of the village?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we can put it in there. I, I.
It covers it in the event.
Is there any, any, anyone against that idea? And I'm, I'm not saying that they should, I just want to make sure if I'm in that, that we, that I consensus.
What was the question to add to that?
Add incorporate the use of service drives and dec- deceleration lanes as a bullet item on page twenty-six.
Which references all of the district, not the three individuals, the whole stretch.
Is there room to put a service drive?
If they were to do a massive development of some sort, you would want that. We have situations where culvers is, where that, uh, in that area that we have problems with the service drive. Matter of fact, one of the service drives is a parking lot. But I, I think we need to cover those bases so when the developers come in and decide they're gonna do a massive change, we need, that needs to be covered in that.
Okay, got it. All right, well, that's, we have one last comment for you.
Yeah.
Off the, um, well, the recognizable and substantial benefit is a term that was used in some other documents in some of our previous reviews, and that wording, I really like that wording and seeing it in, um, in our design guidelines. So if you see opportunities to put something like that in there as, you know, development guidelines, that they, we want to bring recognizable and substantial benefit to the community um, with that, I, I don't know exactly how you would word that, but, um.
If we, if I had to spot work, that's, you know.
Yeah, I think leaning on that language when we're doing a review and, um, and, and thinking about the community as a whole and something, when a, a development comes along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you. Okay, all right, with that, we move on to safety paths. So, again, as we work our way through the master plan and the different sections that need to be updated and reviewed, um, the safety path priority section is another one that we've identified. Uh, and so tonight, what you have in front of you is a memo that kind of highlights, um, we basically took the draft or the, the, um, the priority map from the twenty nineteen plan. We checked off all of the paths that have been developed. We highlighted the paths that are in that twenty nineteen plan, but were also identified in the community outreach, uh, event. Um, and really are just looking for your feedback on, I'll get to it here. Um, you know, what routes prioritized in the twenty twenty-four master plan community open house should be added to the priority safety path extension table? Again, not all of the routes identified in the community outreach, uh, or in the community open house, um, are on the list as it is now. Um, we did label them from kind of a high priority to a medium priority, and we kind of went through those. Um, what routes from the twenty nineteen plan that have not been built should stay on? And are there any revisions to that sections language, um, that you guys would recommend? Um, from here, tonight, what I'm hoping to do is get the planning commission's feedback on these items. Uh, and then with that, I'll kind of take that feedback along with this information, and we'll go to the safety path committee for their review as well. So I guess this is, maybe this is kind of the most relevant piece to take a look at out the gate, is this is the table from the twenty nineteen plan. All of the routes with a strength through have been built. The two that are highlighted, um, the community identified, uh, past this past March in the open houses, uh, high priority routes that they would like to see developed. And then this is the map from that event. Uh, and then the routes that were identified in the open house that are not on that map, or I'm sorry, that are not in the twenty nineteen plan are M twenty-four from Drainer to Indian Lake, uh, Bar Road from Lakeville Road to East Drainer, Tan View from Seymour Lake Road to West Drainer, and Baldwin from Seymour Lake Road to West Drainer Road. Uh, but again, those were, those last three are medium priorities. Um, and I do know that the safety, the safe, so one of the considerations or the more recent consideration for the safety path committee is, uh, I believe trying to extend the path from where it exists, um, as opposed to picking certain out portions of the township where it might not be, it might be building new from end to end. Not to say that there isn't a strategy there, um, but I believe the focus is shifting a little bit more towards building off what is existing, extending what you have. Um, so with that, uh, I went left to right last time, so we'll go right to left. You're up, Don.
So, yeah, adding, um, say, if the main paths are Polyand Trail and some main arteries that are, um, the most traveled and branching off of those seems to make the most sense versus building, say, a mile or half mile long safety path that connects to not much, that would be my, uh, my input on that. I, I think adjusting the priorities you are crossing off to the ones that have been complete. Um, it seems like the public, although I think it was voted down in November, but priority one, that connection, the public still, still seems to want that. So I, my, my opinion would be that it's number one. Um, and then just adjust all the other priorities up. Um, at, looking at the Sanders Road, that's supposed to be paved at some point in the near future, isn't it? Does it make sense? Or do those projects work together?
Um.
Somehow.
Um, I would have to double check with the engineering as to whether or not if the township works with our COC to pave a road, whether or not the safety path goes in as well, or if it's strictly development specific, so I will have to double check on that.
Okay. Um, let's see. And I, you know, the whole comment I made earlier about just pedestrian safety in general and trying to connect, um, either across twenty-four somehow safely and just looking at it as a, maybe like a tree with branches versus a small tree here and a big tree there, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Blankenship?
Yeah, I think I'm good with what I see here right now, and I concur with the gentleman before me, but, you know, setting it up as a larger tree with branches other than segregated areas is probably the best and, and getting walkways to the Polyand Trail, people, um, enabling access, right? Easier access to get to that, that trail. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Turner?
Well, certainly, I think the Seymour Lake Road trail ought to be number one, as you've identified it, although the, uh, safety path committee has got to figure out where finances will come from. Because that's, got a lot of swamp land that we will bring both through.
Yeah.
Uh, then the other thing that I would say, and, and I really couldn't tell that from the, from the map on page three. But it would be good if we had a loop around the town.
So kind of as the, as this extend, if this extension strategy kind of prevails, kind of looking at that as possibly a loop?
Right. And crossing twenty-four and going on the east side as well as the west.
Okay.
I agree. East to west.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, other than they need to work out a, convince people to give them more money.
I mean, to, to explain the process as I know it, um, so there was the millage. Um, the ordinance as it is structured right now does, if, if you are going to do a development in, uh, anything other than a single, well, other than a single family home standalone, but a, a single family condo development or an industrial development or commercial, you are required to put in a safety path along public and private roads. The way the ordinance is written right now is there is also a payment in lieu option, although it's come, it's, it's being debated as to if their policy needs to change.
Yeah, to get what you really want, you need to remove the option of paying so much and force them to actually put a path in.
Yeah, I mean.
And several, several places on twenty-four, uh, south of town, uh, down almost where Minnetoka is on the other side, where there's a. down almost where Minnetoka is on the other side, where there's a car dealership. And when they did, redid that and went in there, instead of putting the safety path in, they paid the money. Now, maybe it's a requirement that the safety path committee takes that money and actually puts the path in at that point. Something needs to be done there to make it happen, instead of just wish for it. And then go to the taxpayer and have them cough up some money to do it.
Yeah, like I said, I I can't speak to it with any, with any certainty, but I I know that that part of the ordinance has has come up in conversation.
Well, we'd be happy to look at it and change it.
Mr. Chair, sir, if I might, when they come with a site plan, they have to come to this board, make a request, and we recommend to the township board that that safety path in question, we recommend to the board to see if that's in pay, pay in lieu of putting a safety path in. So when those master plans come in.
The site plans?
The site plans, when those site plans come in, then it has to go through this board before it goes to the trustee board to be approved. The second thing is, is that there's a village line and a line for the township, that Minnetoka Drive is in the village. In that particular example, you can bring that to the village to 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 talk about a safety path. That's a little points of clarity there for us.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bailey?
Um, I think I kind of have a a little different opinion. Um, while I would love to see the the Seymour Lake done, I know the cost that's gonna go into that one, and my fear is that would be the only one. I would almost say that we need to look at, you know, some of the other options like East Drainer and twenty four to Drainer, and, you know, some of the other ones where, like, taking that all the way down to Indian Lake Road where it can tie into, oh, what's the trailer goes all the way down into Rochester, to tie in those two together, I think we'd get more bang for our buck. The cost that's gonna go into Seymour Lake Road, I think that's gonna be it.
And you're and you're talking about taking the M twenty four from Drainer to Indian Lake?
Yep.
That high priority that was in the, on this map?
That one and.
In in this table?
Correct. Um, on this, on that list that you have the high priority Seymour Lake, the second one is East Drainer to Bar, the third one is twenty four, uh, from Drainer to Indian Lake Road. I would put Seymour Lake Road at the bottom of that list, only because, again, with what money's available, if that one is the priority, nothing else is going to get done.
So maybe, so you you would look at it from a, the perspective of of taking it out of the, out of the number one priority, or maybe the potential of having there maybe be some discretion amongst the safety path to look at bang for your buck?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I like the idea of taking Seymour Lake out. My only concern was, it goes to Baldwin. Yeah, I guess that would get you to the park. But, I don't know, I think getting people to be able to move in and around downtown more or that area, connecting Drainer to Indian Lake Road and Drainer to Bar after some of those developments.
Okay.
I think would help, especially, I mean, you've got those two new developments that are going in down Drainer, having something where people can ride their bike into town. I think it's a little more important, like.
No, that's fair.
Mr. Chairman, would, would breaking that Seymour Lake Road extension into the smaller projects, would that maybe assist that, as they start to move that way and then do others?
Like as it downland to Sanders and then Sanders to follow, something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, again, I I I'm soliciting feedback, it go and we'll make sure the safety path committee sees it too.
I only ask that just because your point to getting to the park could be advantageous.
Right.
But if it's never gonna get done because we can't get all the way to Baldwin, that would be a shame, right?
Right.
I just thought I'd ask and.
Yep.
Put in the thought process.
Okay. Let me stick it over here. Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah, um, I really do like the idea of building off of existing safety path and expanding what we've got, as opposed to sticking stuff out in the middle of nowhere. On the Seymour, on the priorities, getting people, allowing people a way to get to and from the park, you know, either walking or on their bicycles, I think is important, which is probably why folks devoted that Seymour Lake Road to to Baldwin is is number one. And so I would, I would continue to keep that as a, as a high priority and not reduce it. Maybe talking to the safety path committee, maybe there's a way to phase it in better, so it's more cost effective or or you can at least make some progress over time, but.
Yeah, you know, and it's funny, as I come to think of it, the, like I said, it's, they are required as parts of development. And not too long ago, we were talking about the the likelihood of some development on the other side of Dunlap, which would probably make its way down there, so there might be opportunities in that. But yeah, I, you're kind of piggybacking off of the consensus of one way or the other, getting down Seymour would be good.
Yeah, I I think it would be key.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's good.
Commissioner Nold?
All of our points are very good. We've have results from the survey, and we have results from the gathering up at the Legacy Center, and we have this document. All three of those need to go to the safety path committee. Check some balances put in place at the township. I don't want to be any part of trying to tell the safety path committee what their priorities are or not. I think we can feed back to the safety path committee all this information. They have a master plan, and somehow we need to work with the safety path committee, their master plan, and have that directly reflected in our master plan for the township. So I, my vote would be in favor of pushing this towards the safety path for their review and their feedback to be folded into our master plan. And the same thing would apply to the Polyana Trail, uh, that we have, there's a Polyana Trail Committee. And if we're going to think that, uh, we want to add or take away or connect to that, then we need to have their participation in this information to see how their feelings are at the Polyana Trail Council.
With that being said, are there any, like, as I kind of collect the notes and the thoughts from the planning commission, are there any thought thoughts or I, that you have about this that you would want as per?
What I've been hearing amongst the building, the number one item here is the number one, possibly the number one item of discussion to get the safety path out to the park. And the second thing is, is the payment lieu of has been discussed many times, and I think that needs to be looked at, but that's not for this, that's not for conversation tonight.
Okay. Alright.
And I would defer to the safety path committee to make the recommendations on the prioritization for a master plan.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's on its way to that next.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I can, yeah, just a quick moment, Hollis, real quick. Let me tell you, on page, on page two of that, um, I don't remember four, the old R R R W D railroad right of way, I'll be strainer to Indian Lake, that is part of that bridge, would the bridge be removed at Indian Lake? That old bridge that is like ten feet high, I believe, ten feet tall, uh, that cars have to drive under, I think the train tracks used to go over that, right?
Well, that's a historic.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's historic. I don't think you can take that down.
It's, it's a state landmark.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Does that take care of that?
Not that I want to destroy that, because of the the age of it, and it just seems that, you know, natural progression would be to, uh, to take that into consideration if redoing the path in that area. If that's most beneficial to the community in that area.
Well, the path actually goes.
Right over top of.
Over top of it, it goes up past that, uh.
Right.
That development, and it just kind of dies where, uh, the lake is right there.
Okay.
I was just thinking, that bridge won't last forever, and kind of to your point about cost effectiveness, I agree with you, and your point about that safety path through the wetlands and everything to get to Seymour Lake, it seems to make sense, um, to have maybe that section one that's on, you know, the the safety path from Dunlap to Baldwin maybe be chopped off and stopped at the park, and maybe that reduces costs by some, it makes it a little more palatable to, it's still buildings for wetlands or wherever the channels are.
The biggest cost is the wetlands, which is before you get to the park.
Right, right, which is the most, probably most of the cost, most expensive to build.
Right.
But I, I think I, I think it's still, because the community just, you know, they indicated that, and it seems to make sense to connect that part to the rest of, uh, the township, so they've got it as priority one, but if we could look at cutting off maybe a several hundred feet of it for this involvement, maybe that makes it more, uh, or less expensive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. Uh, okay, if there's no other comments with safety pass, I think I get to take a little break. Alright, thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to new business, uh, election of officers. As stated in our bylaws, we are required to have a commission chair, vice chair, secretary, and then, uh, the various committee positions. Mr. Spiz left, uh, the end of the year and as our vice chair, uh, we haven't had one for that last meeting, but, uh, I've been chair for this year. As I've said many times, I'm willing to serve anywhere the community needs me. But with that, I think we have to have a nomination for that role. If anybody would.
Are you looking for a nomination for the vice chair? Or are you looking for the nomination to start at the top and down or the bottom up?
Chair.
Do we start with chair?
Chair.
Okay, so it has to start with chair.
Mr. Commissioner?
Sir?
I would like to nominate Corey Bailey as a chairman for the upcoming year.
I'll second that nomination.
Just for a point order, do we?
Do you accept it?
I would accept if that's what the committee would like. The question is, do we vote on that, or do we see if there's other nominations, or?
You, you asked for any other nominations?
Seeing none?
And then you will just serve as chair, um, by unanimous consent, if there's no other nominations?
Okay. Then next would be vice chair? Wow, everybody's quiet.
Don't all volunteer at once.
I was gonna nominate you.
Oh, I can't.
Then I would nominate Mr. Nold as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Does Mr. Nold accept that nomination?
Well, I'll accept the nomination.
Okay, seeing none. By unanimous decision. Then we need a secretary. Anybody would like to serve in that capacity?
Just FYI, that's the easiest position, because the only thing you have to do is chair the meeting if the chair and the vice chair are both gone.
Can I change my mind?
No.
I would nominate Mr. Turner for that role.
I'll second that.
If you would accept that role?
Yes.
Seeing no other nominations, uh, you will serve in that, uh, by unanimous decision. Then moving on to committee appointments. First one being the Economic Development Committee. I remind you who was on this before, I know it was Mr. Spiz.
It's been inactive for a couple of years, and I know, I I believe at one of your earlier meetings, you discussed letting it rest.
Okay.
Because it, it's been two years, at least.
Is there anything in the bylaws that say we have to fill this committee, or can it sit?
That's a Cheryl question.
I mean, I think it's, I think, Cheryl will give the quote, but I think it just states that you appoint. I don't know that dictates when.
But is it something if we don't appoint somebody, can we go without a committee?
My, my thought would be, and again, I'll, I'll let Cheryl back me up on this, is that if and when the, the purpose for this committee comes to at that next meeting, you could then appoint the individuals on that meeting, that that group would become active again. I'm like eighty percent sure.
I think it's not a committee that's in the bylaws.
It's, yeah, it is not in our bylaws. I believe it, when it was created, it was created for a specific purpose.
So we could table that one until the need arises?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so then the next one would be the ordinance review committee, which historically, one of the members is also the liaison to the township board, correct?
It's a member of the township.
Okay, so would that be of interest?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
So then, Mr. Wagner? I know that Mr. Turner, Mr. Nold and I were on before. Mr. Turner, you were the chair of that, correct?
Right.
Would you be willing to stay on?
Sure. It was enjoyable.
Okay.
I'm glad to hear that.
I would also prefer Mr. Nold on this and me as an alternate. We've spoken several times, I think he brings more value to it than I. If you would stay on that role, sir?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals Liaison, um, for the last several years, that has been me. I don't know, is anybody interested or have a burning desire for that, or?
Or am I getting stuck with it again?
I don't mind it, I actually enjoy it, but if somebody else had a burning desire and wanted to.
But, and just FYI, they meet the second Monday of every month, if necessary. So I think they met six times in twenty twenty four.
Correct.
So it's not an every month thing.
Were you wanting?
Was I volunteering? No, not that I could, but.
So then we will just leave that one as is. Um, gravel inspection in the past was myself and Mr. Nold. I'm assuming you would like to stay.
That's fine.
In that capacity. Is there anybody that would like to serve as a representative of the gravel inspection committee?
I would be interested.
Okay. I'll keep with you afterwards, spell your name properly for the sheet.
It's okay, if, if, and if it's something that you would prefer to stay on, I have no issue with that, I just, I'm I'm interested in that.
No, it's, uh, it it it's good, it's it's a great opportunity, I learned a lot. But I'd be glad to step aside and let you.
You know, I'm the same way, I've, I've been on that for quite some time, but it's an appointment by the chair of the planning commission.
Maybe Mr. Blankenship would appreciate it.
I think it's done once a year or twice a year, Susan.
Okay.
Are they twice now?
Can you go out to the gravel yards? Well, Corey can probably explain what you do.
Yeah, we go to the, all the gravel pits, we go through, we get a tour, um, we get. Yeah, we go to the, all the gravel pits, we go through, we get a tour, um we get an update, uh not a sales pitch, but. A a presentation on what they've done, um. It's it's a great experience to see what goes on day to day, um and then you get to tour the facilities with them, you see the expansions. You see the safety measures. But uh.
Alright, I didn't, I wouldn't mind doing that.
Okay.
It'd be a great experience, I think.
So we're low second blank. Yeah, so I'm interested in Corey.
So you have Mister Losick and.
Blankenship?
Mister Blankenship.
Okay.
Okay, and then. There's not anything on here, but I know in the past, I've sat in on the Safety Path. Committee meetings, um I think you'd like to have somebody on there, um I will be honest that a lot of the meetings have. Fallen when I'm traveling, so if anybody else would be. Interested in that.
I'd be interested in that, possibly.
Okay.
When do they meet?
You guys can't appoint, it's not your committee.
Oh, it's not? Okay.
It's not a PC committee.
It's committee.
It's a township.
Oh, it's a township. But do we, do we, we have, I mean, they sent me to go to those meetings.
I believe they've already made their, I think they already made you.
Oh. Okay, then. Okay, then.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And your first meeting is next Wednesday, uh the fifteenth.
At eleven thirty, yes.
Yes.
I was actually set for something else, but. Can I speak for a second?
Just come to the podium, state your name, your address.
My, bat my eyes, um just as it relates to the ORC, um. The ORC was scheduled to meet uh earlier today and review work plan, uh the work plan that had been put together by the former ORC. Um and to start the work on presenting at the Planning Commission, we felt that since those appointments could change. Uh we held off on the meeting today, um but now that you've made those appointments, I just wanted to reach out to the ORC members. And say that we'd like to schedule a meeting Friday the sixteenth or the twenty third of this month, um so that we can review that work plan. Confirm that it is what the ORC wants to work on the twenty five, and then we can get it from the Planning Commission at the next available meeting. So I just, again, I can send out an email, we can, we can set it up that way, but just as kind of a quick heads up. Um probably looking to get you guys together on the sixteenth to the twenty third, and maybe the twenty third makes the most sense.
Because that's our next.
PC meeting?
PC meeting. That has worked very well in the past.
Yeah.
Thing is, can Mister Wagner meet during the day?
Yep, e- either day is fine with me and and pretty much any time during the day.
We typically meet at noon.
Okay.
And maybe go for an hour, hour and a half.
That's fine, that works.
Okay.
I told you does not bring lunch.
I knew it, I knew someone was gonna say something about how I can't bring lunch.
And and just also for clarification, if one of you cannot make it, let me know, I'll free up my schedule and be there. But just for clarification, I can't be there if the other three are, because then it constitutes a quorum.
Yeah, for, they are technically public meetings, we do take minutes for as good as I can do, but um. But yes, they are public meetings, so there are quorum requirements, um so on and so forth, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, nobody else from the committee or the the Planning Commission can attend that.
Right, cause then we got ourselves a planning.
Cause then you got four me.
Okay, so, okay, I will send out an email and we'll get it on the books, thank you.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you, um moving on to item C, PC twenty four dash zero zero two. Seventh Amendment to Master Deed of Enclaves Woodbridge Condominium. Applicant Enclaves Woodbridge LLC five one four one zero. Milano Drive, Suite one fifteen, McComb, Michigan, four eight zero four two. Seventh Amendment to the Master Deed recorded in Libra five six one five five, page six seven two. Oakland County Records, as known as Oakland County Condominium Subdivision, Plan Number two three four one. We'll start with the petitioner.
Well, I came all this way.
Yeah, you should, nevermind.
Yeah, you come on up and.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and Honorable Planning Commissioners, uh.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, uh I'm Daniel Spatterport on behalf of Enclaves of Woodbridge LLC, addresses noted. On the record, uh last month, we were here December twelfth, where the final site plan was presented for consideration. And approved by the Planning Commission, and in one of the motions uh. Yeah, indicated that the Planning Commission was to um, you know, make a determination and review of this, the seventh and final amendment. To this master deed for our development Enclaves of Woodbridge, this is our pursuant to the last phase where we've added. The uh final twenty uh units in there, and uh with this master deed amendment. You do have um the replat number three, which is the uh engineering condominium drawings. Of those last twenty units within there, as as well as the sanitary storm and water easements. Uh the way that was presented, uh to the best of my knowledge, the township attorney, along with our condominium attorney, carefully reviewed. And approved and uh. Uh Brittany, the Brittany Ellis, the township attorney, associate counsel for her office was uh. Was satisfied with it, and I believe she's approved it, I've not seen anything negative, it's been reviewed a number of times. So um with that, I'm respectfully requesting uh approval by this Planning Commission tonight. Uh for the seventh amendment, and I'm happy to, you know, further answer, answer any further questions that you might have, thank you.
Do you have anything you needed to add or bring up?
Just that the planning and legal have reviewed it, um and it's, you know, if there were red flags, it wouldn't be in front of you tonight. I believe Brittany's written a motion that provides approval for the condominium, and this is really a technicality of just. Crossing T's and dotting I's and having the Planning Commission approve, if you've read and have questions, like I said, I'm here, Mister Spatterforce here, but that's all.
Okay. Well, we can open this, or no, we have to have a. We just have to have a motion.
Yeah, there's, everybody should have had gotten this.
You have Brittany's motion.
You have to look on the backside.
So, yeah, we, in order to even discuss it, we have to open it up with a a motion.
Mister John McMoyn.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the seventh amendments to the Master Deed, Enclaves of Woodbridge Condominium, and direct. The developer of the project record, same accordance with the state law and township ordinances, am I reading that correctly?
Record, to record it, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got to.
That's fine.
So we have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, um any discussion, any questions? From the commissioners? Seeing none, if we can have a roll call vote?
Nold?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Losick?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Uh motion carries, thank you and uh.
Don't leave.
I uh I truly appreciate that, again, I know we talked beforehand, I apologize, I thought. The way we read the the motion, that it wasn't a technicality, but I appreciate you coming back.
No, that's fine, because I reread your ordinance, and it does give the authority of the Planning Commission to approve it. I've been subject to further reviews a long time, and current Planning Commissioner, myself and my community, I I can appreciate. I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service, uh public service doing that and your involvement in the community, so I know. Uh what that takes, it's something to consider uh in the future, these are my recordable documents for final execution, that'll start that process. Will start tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee reports, we obviously don't have one for the economic development. Anything from the ORC, I know you didn't have a meeting today.
No, our meeting will be on the twenty third at noon.
Yeah, let me get the email going, but that sounds like the way it'll be.
Okay.
My report is the next meeting.
Okay, and we have Mister Sharp's report in our packets. Um does anybody have any questions or anything on that? Anything else you would like to add, sir?
No, just I mean, we're we're working on a site plan right now, um we're in a revise and resubmit period, so. We need a few things cleaned up and clarified, but we'll probably again have it on one of the February agendas.
Alright, thank you very much, um with that, uh we don't need a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mister Chairman, to close our meeting.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, we are adjourned.